Okay, 6:30, we will start our meeting. Mr. City Clerk?
I'll call the roll. Commissioner Goldman?
Here.
Commissioner Lama?
Here.
Commissioner Viscara?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sefchen?
Here.
Mayor Shaw?
Here.
All members present.
Excellent, thank you. Jeffrey, would you lead us in the pledge tonight?
I will be on it.
Thank you.
Everyone, right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chief Schneider was doing our invocation this evening. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, if we could bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, as we approach the high holidays of Passover, Good Friday, and Easter, we humbly ask that you pray for all of those who live, work, and play in our amazing city of Sunny Isles Beach. Father, we gather here tonight for this commission meeting in the best interest of our community. Bestow upon us your guidance that we will continue to work for the good of our community and the safety of our citizens. Teach us to be understanding in our daily outlook, courageous in the face of difficulty, and wise in our decisions. Fill our hearts with only good things that protect life, promote truth, and spread friendship to our fellow man, especially during this holiday season where families come together in celebration and reflection. Father, thank you for the blessings of freedom and the honor of serving this wonderful community while promoting goodwill, order, and justice for all who reside and visit here. Let us pray for the safety of those in our military and for our first responders who stand in harm's way on a daily basis. And ultimately, we pray for world peace in these turbulent times with the sincere hope of brighter and safer days ahead. And with that, let us all say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. Okay, approval of our summary minutes. Item 3A, has everybody had a chance to read the minutes from March 20th, Special City Commission meeting? Do I hear a motion to approve those? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And then we have a March 21st regular commission meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good. Okay, can we roll the tape on the order of business, please? We're on our opening statement.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome, and thank you for being here tonight. Please turn off or mute any electronic devices to avoid interrupting these proceedings. In all issues that come before the city commission, we ask that everyone show mutual respect for one another by listening quietly to each person speaking, and that everyone refrain from any clapping, heckling, or verbal outbursts in favor or in opposition to a speaker. Individuals that do not adhere to Chapter 74 Rules of Procedure of the Code, particularly Section 74-21 decorum, shall be barred from further appearance before the commission. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair and/or do not cease speaking after one warning, you will be escorted out of the chambers.
Thank you. There's no changes to tonight's agenda, so it's as it stands. So before we get started on special presentations, I want to make one presentation of my own. As many of you know, we've got four sister cities: Natania, Israel; Taramina, Sicily; Punto de Leste, Uruguay; and Heng Cheng, Taiwan. And we actually just came back from a trip to Taiwan. Some of us went down there. But about a year and a half ago, we went down to Punto de Leste, Uruguay, and we had a very interesting trip. And we've kind of started a little bit of a ritual where we bring an intern to our city from one of our sister cities. And it's not really a formal process of picking the intern. We just kind of, if we go visit the city and we find a young person that we think stands out, we will invite them to come. And that young person is here because she actually is about to go home in a week because she's been here almost a year as an intern from Punto de Leste. So Carol, Carol Malamed, come on up here. So Carol and her husband managed to get pregnant while they were here. So I told Carol, I said, "She's the only person that's probably pregnant in this city that is going to go back home to have their baby," you know? Because we kind of know what goes on around here. So I give Carol a little bit of a hard time about that. But Carol did a great job, and I think, you know, she enjoyed her time here. An infectiously wonderful attitude. You know, Carol was always upbeat, and she fell right in with the staff, and we had a -- it was just wonderful having her. So I want to thank her for her time here. Hopefully, she takes some skills back to Punto de Leste and Mayor Andres and the whole crowd down there. But this has been a great experience for us, you know, having these young people come from our sister cities and spend some time here and learn a little bit, and we learn a little bit from them, and it's always a lot of fun. So Carol, you did a great job. And if the commission can come down, I want to take a picture and give Carol a certificate. That's okay. Yeah, the side view's okay. Okay, so our first presentation tonight, and before we start that, again, I want to acknowledge, I think, most members of our Public Arts Advisory Committee, we call it the PAC, are here tonight. And can you guys stand, everybody on the PAC committee? When I say a thankless job, you know, everybody has opinions about art, right? So everybody thinks that their opinions matter. But in our city, these are the folks whose opinions really matter. So I want to thank you all for serving on this committee. You know, as most of you all know, we did a cultural master plan, and one of the recommendations was to put a PAC together, and we did. And, you know, Lynn Danheiser is here, and she's going to report on the PAC's committee and what the committee's been doing. But these folks have done a great job. I've been to a couple of the meetings. You know, what's great is we've got really, really great expertise now. And like I said, it is a thankless job because no matter, you know, like being on the dais, no matter what we do, half the people are going to be upset. But at least I know, you know, we know you're coming at it with, you know, with knowledge and with good taste. So we greatly appreciate that. And with that, I'm going to invite Lynn Danheiser up. Yep, great. And Lynn is going to report on the, what is it, unifying elements and goals for public arts. How's that?
Yes.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you so much for your indulgence. And our chairperson, Javier Rabinevich, sends his regards. He's in Argentina for the holidays. So the purpose of this report is not just to update you on the work of the PAC, but to propose a set of guidelines and goals for approval by this commission. The committee has been very hard at work since we had the joint workshop with the commission and the identification of the two projects, the signature artwork we decided on and the art park, which has turned into a meditation garden. That's been a little bit delayed, by the way, because of the mitigation of the mangroves. And also, the signature art piece, which is actually being donated, needs to come to us as well, and then we can plan out the rest of the garden. In any case, I want to report a couple of things. One is that in the process of evaluating, you know, part of the task of the committee is to evaluate the developers' art in public places. One of those pieces of art kind of raised the specter of whether or not the evaluation and appraisal was accurate in terms of the cost that they had evaluated. So we decided what we needed was to secure the services of a public art curator and appraiser. And we were very fortunate to go out and find one of the most esteemed members of the art community who happens to have a connection to this city. He actually appraises a lot of art for our citizens in Sunny Isles Beach. And he was also one of the original founders of the Art in Public Places program for the county and administered that. I have attached his voluminous resume to the report so you can see the many things that he's done. Well, he did, in fact, come and do the appraisal. We got a lot of positive results from that. He also has agreed to do the following things for us. His name, obviously, is Glenn Long. Not only in evaluating proposed application for art in public places, he's developed a professional electronic registration process, including the use of cataloging forms to track the city's art collection. He rendered advice on budget development, and he's identifying a list of potential funding sources for our public art projects. Lastly, we decided that what we needed to do was find a set of unifying elements for all of the public art in the city and to identify those things that would unify the built environment in the public art and in our art acquisitions. He interviewed each of the PAC members individually and then facilitated two group discussions. In this process, it became clear, and I hope that you're going to like this conclusion and subscribe to it, rather than procuring a single signature artwork for the city, such as an individual piece of sculpture, the PAC unanimously advocates to the commission the use of existing or planned resources and infrastructure, including pedestrian bridges, parks, green spaces, entryways, signage, and pathways for movement as themselves an opportunity for public art. It's also a lot cheaper that way. Saves some money. So we are recommending the marriage of art and urban infrastructure as that unique opportunity for art. So then we moved on to the delineation of goals and unifying themes. In this regard, and using the cultural master plan as a guide, three goals were identified. And I'm presenting this to you for your adoption and approval and discussion, obviously, and whatever changes you might suggest. One of the goals is to unify pedestrian movement ways throughout the city. Two is to employ existing and improving and multiplying public gathering spaces and parks. And three is improvements and enhancements to existing focal points within the city. The PAC believes that the aesthetic enhancements to the city's three pedestrian bridges over Collins Avenue and/or reimagining and replacement of the current identifying signage at the city's four entrance and exit points present the opportunity to become signature art for the city in the next budget year. With regard to the pedestrian bridges, architectural design proposals for the first of these three have been reviewed by the PAC members, and comments about aesthetic features to the structure have been offered. PAC member Patricia Finchman, who is sitting right here, has long advocated for having functional art in public areas and made a presentation about this early on. Aesthetics goals set forth above and the themes that I'm about to talk to you about were discussed on the March 20th meeting and are now recommended to the commission and requested to be considered for incorporation into the current bridge designs. These same aesthetic considerations can and are encouraged to be used in the design of the other two pedestrian bridges in order to create a sense of coordination and unity for pedestrian access over Collins Avenue. In the same vein, the PAC suggests innovative and imaginative identification of Sunny Isles Beach entrances and exits. There is a need, the PAC concluded, to re-envision the announcement to travelers in motor vehicles and on foot that one is entering Sunny Isles Beach. There are four entrances to the city, Collins, the north, Collins at the south, 826, and the Lehman Causeway. Each of these entrances has a different design or design configuration, with the current north and south entrances physically limited due to property boundaries and SR 826, 163rd Street entrance identified with a lettered sign attached to the FPL transmission station west wall. Currently, the most flexible space for a re-envisioned city entrance theme is the Lehman Causeway space. Roadway entrances can be a unifying signature art by coordinating the design features for all four entry locations and enhancing the aesthetic image of the city. Slogans such as the original, when I was here, "Life with a View," and the current Florida's Riviera, used in the Lehman Causeway, were discussed, and the PAC sees them as somewhat dated. It believes that they reflect a different demographic and social dynamic that exists in the current multi-generational and residential Sunny Isles Beach urban makeup. Further, while such phrases can be effectively used in promotional materials, they can be incompatible in a more visually expressed public arena with three-dimensional aesthetic identities. After much debate, the PAC would encourage the commission to use the following elements or themes to guide design in streetscape, infrastructure, and art acquisition, and they are color, light, water, and botanical design. The PAC favors and encourages the use of these themes in the creative design of public art projects. The PAC is not in favor of designating a palette, per se, and does not wish to limit the use of color and light, except that these themes be compatible with adjacent applications and enhance existing visual dynamics. Dr. Long suggested water could be employed in its richest variability, this is a quote from him, "using water flow characteristics that embrace liquid effects, possibly in combination with light and color, to maximize the aesthetic experience." PAC members Fabio Oliveri, sitting on the end, and next to him Diane Drabkin, each made a presentation, Fabio with the use of light, Diane has been looking at sculpture and has been an equal vocal advocate of light as art. Jessie Cukrakorn, who is sitting next to Patricia, offered that colored LCDs or neon lights bathing entire bridge surfaces, walls, roadways with colored light or dynamic light projections should be considered. Additionally, the committee felt strongly that to complement the sometimes imposing, albeit creative, architecture of the built environment, that the use of botanical themes in public spaces could be expanded as a way of softening the environment. Javier Rabinevich, our chair, led the discussion on this theme. We'd like you to consider this so that we can start applying these goals and themes to the work as it progresses. We'd like to acknowledge Dr. Long for his participation. We'd also wish to recommend his expertise to this commission in the future on a case-by-case basis as the public art program develops. If the commission approves this report, the goals and themes will become an additional set of objective guidelines for the PAC in its work. With your indulgence, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I would like to ask the committee members if anybody has anything in particular they'd like to address or add to what's been said.
If you did an excellent job.
Okay. All right.
Once again, Lynn steals the show. Yeah, we're used to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
So if you would discuss it, I know that this is not an action item. We'd just like to get some feedback.
Great. Thank you very much, Lynn. Okay. Okay, we go to item 5B, our presentation of our audit report. Tiffany?
Honorable Mayor and Commissioner, I'm happy to report that the audit for the 2017-2018 fiscal year is complete. You should have received the consolidated annual financial report. We have Bill Bland, which is our audit partner for Moore Stevens Lovelace, here to speak with you about the audit and deliver a presentation. After that time, you could ask any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioner, Bill Bland, Moore Stevens Lovelace. As Tiffany mentioned, yes, I'm here to present the fiscal year-end 2018 audit report to you, as well as just briefly touch on the required communication, which should have been included in your package. I did that in a letter form. The required communications, the audit standards require us to communicate certain items to you, and we did that through a formal letter rather than me read those items to you. So before I continue, I just open up, are there any questions as it relates to the required communication?
Is there anything out of the ordinary in the required communications?
There is not, sir.
That's the right answer.
Okay. Audit deliverables, those in essence are the audit reports that are included in the CAFR. So the first audit report or the first audit deliverable is the audit report on the financial statements themselves. You've received an unmodified opinion, which is the best, the highest level of assurance you can receive related to your financial statements, meaning that the information was audited by us, and we sign off on those, that we did not find any material errors in those financial statements. The next required document that we have to provide to you in performance of a government audit is the report on internal controls. We issued our report, and again, that's a report that had no findings in it. So one of the things I'd like to point out that I think's important, and I can tell you from experience, doesn't always happen, when you have a changeover in the finance director position, which is the position that kind of runs the finance department and keeps the ship afloat, that portion of the ship, that was a very smooth transition, literally didn't skip a beat, so really Tiffany deserves kudos for that, so.
Right.
The next item, as required by the rules of the auditor general through the Florida statutes, is the management letter. And again, that is a clean, or there's no comments in that, just the normal required communications in that. And then the final document that's required to be provided to you is the independent accountant's report on your compliance with a Florida statute related to your investment policy and whether or not your investment policy complies with the statute, and I can tell you that it does, and that's what we indicated in our report to you. So with that, I would just ask if there's any questions about the reports. Not seeing it.
Anyone? No. I mean, very, very clean. And we appreciate the comments. Tiffany, I know it's always tough when you transition over, but, you know, fortunately you had legacy knowledge, and I think it made it fairly seamless.
It was very positive.
Yeah, that's great.
It's important, and again, I can't stress that enough, I've dealt with other situations where that's not the case.
Yeah, where it's not the case. I think we've had the situation where it's not the case, too. You know, years ago, the old mayor's here, Norman, and, not that you're old, Norman, but the former mayor's here, not the old mayor. So that's right. So there we go. See, I caught myself, Dana. Come on, come on, come on. Go ahead, Bill.
The last thing I'd like to do is just go over some really high-level financial information. There's a ton of financial information in the CAFR itself. Don't mean to breeze through that, but I'm always available if you have any questions after looking at it, you want to reach out to me in the future. I am your external auditor, so please, if you have any questions, ask me. But other than that, I'm just going to go through some highlights. So if we look here, your main operating fund is your general fund, so just look at its financial condition, if you will. You can see you have assets well in excess of your liabilities. You can see that your unassigned fund balance is $16 million, and I believe that's just around 45%, 50% of your expenditures for the year, so you're in a good place there. And then your current year net change was a positive change of $7.9 million, so good results in your general fund. Everyone generally focuses on the budget. I know you go through budget hearings, you do a lot of work on the budget, you know, take a lot of time and effort in that. So this is just a high-level overview. You can see budgeted revenues came in slightly above what you anticipated, and in addition to that, your expenditures were under budget, so creating ultimately that positive net result. And then your proprietary fund, your stormwater fund, again, you have assets and deferred outflows which exceed your liabilities and deferred inflows. And if you're not familiar with the term outflows and inflows, we could have a long four-hour discussion about that. That's a GASB item, not common to general accounting, but anyway, it's a unique government issue. But anyway, there's just a net increase you can see there. Obviously, stormwater fund isn't, you know, a huge utility thing like a water sewer or electric fund or something like that, but again, a positive outcome. So with that, I would just open up, if there's any questions on the financial information.
Any questions for Bill? No? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yep, great. And again, I want to, you know, kudos to the department, and this is so fantastic.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think that there was a request from the PAC for us to have some discussion because they need to move on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They just wanted...
Oh, okay, okay.
They wanted to know if we approved the elements.
We just need a motion on the report if you accept it.
Oh, no, absolutely. Yeah, okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, Lynn. Yeah, so that was a nail-biter.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was a real squeaker. That was a real squeaker. So, okay. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Tiffany. And next up, we've got our scholarship awards from the City of Sunny Isles Beach and the Kiwanis Club, and Susan's going to kick that off. And I know we've got some folks from the Kiwanis here tonight, so welcome.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner. This is our ninth year with our college scholarship program, and we have dozens of very grateful college graduates, and some of which are even employees now, so this program has been very successful. So I'm going to call up each of you. Please come up and stand in front of the audience when I call your name. This year's four city awardees are, in alphabetical order, as they were all equally as impressive. George Kaye. George, you want to come up? George is an overachiever that is looking forward to a college career at the University of Miami. He served our community well throughout his high school years, volunteering over 1,000 hours to the city with special events and summer camp. George's passion for the city was evident when he would encourage others to come to events and participate. He believes that it is the unity in our community that makes us so great. So congratulations.
Excellent. Thank you, George.
Diego DiAgostino. Diego has been accepted to Columbia University and attributes much of what he has learned about self-discipline, teamwork, and organization from his time volunteering with the city since he was 14 years old. From long days working a special event to cleaning up after toddlers at day camp, Diego found great joy in his over 400 hours of work dedicated to the city residents and visitors. Congratulations, Diego. Michaela Gershenson. Michaela plans to attend Ling University after graduation and pursue a PhD in psychology. Michaela strives to unite the youth and adults in our community through her work with special events. Spending her summers away, she continued her volunteer work at ABC Support in New York. Congratulations. Emily Talalovsky. Emily is looking forward... Come on up. Are you trying to run out the back door? Emily is looking forward to attending the University of Florida this fall. Anyone who has been involved with the city would know Emily as she grew up right here at all of our events. She fondly recalls braving the haunted house at the annual Boogie by the Beach with her older brothers, and then had the opportunity to work behind the scenes as a volunteer for us years later. Emily is the product of our community with a number of volunteer hours dedicated to the Russian Habad, in addition to her hours worked for the city. We congratulate all of our winners. And now we have, if you would just wait, we have a special presentation from Kiwanis. So Jeffrey Burson, if you'd come up, please. so Jeffrey Burson, if you'd come up, please.
Thank you. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Jeffrey Burson, Vice President of the Kiwanis Club of Northeast Miami-Dade. We are here tonight to present a college scholarship to an individual who has changed Sunny Isles Beach in many ways. He's changed his school, he's changed the world. He's been living here since probably as a six-year-old, and he goes to the beach, and he found that the beaches were not clean, and he took it upon himself to start cleaning the beaches. When he got to high school, he formed a club, a marine environmental science academy, and has employed, or unemployed, but encouraged 200 students from that school to be part of this organization. Not only cleaning up our environment, but also doing things on a global environment and getting involved with global organizations. It is our proud honor to present this scholarship award to Uriel Rudbrinovich.
Yeah, all yours. It's all right, no worries. Okay, great, great. Love seeing our young people get recognized. Okay, next on the agenda is our Sunny Isles Beach K-38 Children's Fund. I'm not going to say old Commissioner, I'm going to say former Commissioner Jeanette Gatto is here, and our school principal, Dr. Adam Koznitzky, so, welcome. So what does it feel like to be on that side of the, you know, you're at the podium, Jeanette?
Yes, it's a pleasure being on this side of the campus.
There you go, there you go.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. I'm here with Dr. Adam Koznitzky, our Principal of NSC K-8 School, affectionately known as Dr. K, and we're here to give a report on the school fund. I thought briefly I would talk a bit about what the school fund is for everyone who at home is watching, or who's here who's not familiar with the school fund, but it's the Sunny Isles Beach Children's School Fund. And what we do is, it's very simple, we raise money for the school. In the past years, with the help of some developers, we're able to do some amazing things for the school. For example, two school years ago, we were working with a generous donation from the Desire family and built a beautiful computer lab at the school, which I know that some of the parents and the kids are familiar with. This year, we're able to deliver 64 brand-new computers with workstations that really help the teachers in this area, and to do a better job in facilitating what they need to do with the students. So our charge is 100 percent focus on the students, 100 percent donation. Really, what we do is we get the big-ticket items, what I like to call big-ticket items, to deliver state-of-the-art tools to really give our kids a competitive edge in the marketplace. This year, we are introducing a STEAM effort, not STEM but STEAM, the difference is we're adding an art element into this plan. It's called Rolling with Art, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. K, so he can briefly take you through funds that we are going to raise, hopefully to support this amazing project for our kids.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, and if my math is correct, if I may be off by one, but I think we have approximately eight, I think we have eight children in our building, upon which we have commission members' children, of which we have parents of our, approximately eight students. Just a little bit about our project, this year it's approximately $30,000 that we're seeking. Back in the day, when we were in school, we would print documents like this, a little one-page document. With this program, we'll be using, doing 3D types of objects, 3D printers, incorporating art, incorporating a writing component, but really utilizing all aspects of the STEAM. S for science, T for technology, E for engineering, A for arts, and M for math. We're going to incorporate all five entities. I'm proud to say that our school, our proud school here at Sunny Isles Beach, is now a STEAM-designated school. We just finished up year number two, and we're continuing to push the highest achievement we've had in the school's history over the past two years, which we're very proud of, and a lot of that's due to the fact that we've added a lot of advanced academics for high-school-type courses into our building, predominantly for our middle-school students. Now, I know we have parents in the room here that are elementary school, have elementary school-aged children, but they will get older. But nonetheless, as far as our STEAM initiative today is, this is an extra enrichment piece. We're a community that's not striving for the basics. We can get the basics anywhere, but Sunny Isles Beach is a school of excellence, and again, with this program, we'll be focusing on the latest state-of-the-art technologies. Again, no more one-dimensional type printing, a lot of 3D printing, a lot of aspects with the writing, and again, incorporating science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. So I thank you, and we really appreciate the support of the community for this.
So, it sounds incredible, so we're going to do something fun and exciting this year, and different. We're holding a raffle. The raffle will be, the first prize will be $5,000, it's a cash raffle. Second prize is $2,500, third prize is $500. We are limiting the ticket sales to 500 in total. The tickets are $50 each, and we're really asking for anyone and everyone who can help, donate, and get this program going up for our kids, our new STEAM program, to please buy a raffle ticket. There are ways that you can do that, is you can go to our Facebook, which is @Children's Fund, @Children's Fund, and you'll see the place to enter there. There's also a leave-behind at the table in the back, which has a link where you can put in your computer and your URL, tap into that, and it'll take you right to the raffle page. So really, I'm addressing this to any of the parents of the children at the school who are direct benefits of what we're trying to do. Please buy a ticket, it's going to be fun, and we're going to announce the winner at the June 2 anniversary party in Town Center. So, I just would briefly, one more thing, I just want to thank, there's so many people in the background that help us and support us. Commissioner Viscara, who is our Vice President, and your selection mayor to represent the Commission. I don't want to forget anyone. Our City Manager, Chris Russo, who's been an amazing help with us in getting things done sort of in the back, in the background, along with Susan Simpson, who is another tremendous help. We have David Quenka, who is a extraordinary in the area of graphic design, and has been incredibly helpful. Carla Mas, who wears two hats as always, Secretary Treasurer, and Karen Snyder. Don't want to forget Karen, she's not a board member, but she's an active associate and is very, very helpful. So, did I forget anyone? No, we're there. Okay, so @Children's Fund, please consider buying a ticket, and maybe you'll win five, turn $50 into $5,000. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Koznitzky. Thanks, Jeanette. Excellent report. Okay, last of our special presentations, we have the, we have the honor of having our Fire Chief from Miami-Dade County here today, Chief Downey, and this is a, this is a special, special meeting for him, so, thank you, Chief.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Again, I'm Dave Downey, your Fire Chief, and I appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight and present and speak about our annual report. I know you received a copy of it, and yes, you're right, coming to a close after 37 years, I'll be retiring in a couple weeks, and so I want to extend my sincere thanks to this city and to you and the manager, and for all of your support throughout the years in operating the department. Again, your department is a full-service department. We operate 70 stations and 145 units, and we're still one of the 10th-largest departments in the United States. Last year, we ran about 260,000 calls for service, and we do that with 2,600 employees, 2,000 of them, almost 2,100 are uniform firefighters. We're doing better, we're continuing to grow. Last year, we put two units in service, we broke ground on a replacement station, we hired five classes and put 131 new firefighters on the street. We've got a class going now of 40, and we have another class being hired at the end of May of 40, and we're going to continue to hire because that translates into service. I'm pleased to note that last year, we reduced our ISO insurance rating from a four to a two, and so now we're in a small class of the 46,000 fire departments, with one of only about 1,300 that have a Class One or a Class Two, and I'm confident that the next time, we'll be a Class One. The new guy will do a better job than me, so.
I doubt it.
No, we're putting a lot of things in place. So we're continuing to grow. This past April, we actually put three more units in service across the county, first time in our history, three new trucks in service in one day, and that equates to about 49 firefighters. And we're going to continue to hire. I'm also pleased to let you know that at the end of the month, you'll be getting a new truck here at Station 10, one of our new initiatives, Clean Cab Engines, trying to reduce the exposure of our firefighters to the smoke products and so forth, and so we bought six new engines, and one of them's coming here. So, specific to the city, again, we've been serving you since 1997. Last year, we ran 3,177 calls for service, and this is done primarily from Station 10, with some help from Station 21, and that gives you about 18 firefighters. But I'm proud of the fact that, you know, within four miles of the city, we have another nine stations, eight more fire trucks, including the fireboat, eight rescues, and three chiefs, so another 56 firefighters. And one of the standards we're held to, and this area is very prominent with the high-rises, for a high-rise fire, we have to assemble the initial alarm, we have to assemble 43 firefighters just to attack the initial of a high-rise fire. So we have well over that, over 60 within the area of the city. Our customer satisfaction survey, our county-wide score is 4.86. You guys did great, we're 4.91 here in the city. And our response times, this is the yardstick we're always measured against, and we're doing everything that we can to try to reduce our response times. I wish I could do something about the traffic, but I can't, but alerting and processing and things like that. Our county-wide average is 7 minutes and 41 seconds, and here in the city, it's 6 minutes and 26 seconds, so much better. And in fires, we're averaging 6 minutes and 7 seconds, and here, we're 4 minutes and 22 seconds. So that's kind of the highlights of it. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and again, I appreciate the opportunity to present.
Thank you, Chief. I'd just like to say, Chief Downey probably has one of the most important jobs in our region. I can tell you, it's not an easy job, he's got a lot of conflicting priorities, but I can also tell you, he has been a great friend of the cities for as long as we've been interacting. Just, you know, the fire department's responsible for a lot of different things besides fighting fires in our community, and the chief is, I mean, anytime I know we've reached out or the manager's called upon him, I mean, he has pulled our backside out of the fire, so to speak, many times, and so, Chief, you know, I can't thank you enough, and, you know, like I said, a lot of things happen, you know, behind the scenes that the public doesn't see, but we see, and you've been a great, you've been a great friend and a great supporter of everything that we do here, so, you know, for that, we really appreciate it, and we've got a little something for you as well, so.
Yeah, Chief, I've got to chime in on that, what the mayor's saying. I mean, there are so many things, and I won't even get into them, that we could not have done in this city. Some of them have to do with our capital projects, some of them have to do with direct public safety as regards to the fire department, but it couldn't have been done without Chief Downey and the support of the entire department. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Tonight wouldn't be complete without giving the chief a piece of wood, so. Because on behalf of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Commissioner, recognition of your distinguished career and dedication to excellence in public service and intergovernmental collaboration. That's fantastic. Thank you for this. Thank you.
One of the things I've tried to do for a number of years is make sure we're connected with the communities we serve, and so I came with a gift for you, which is what we hope you proudly display here in the city, and it embraces our color scheme, our green fire trucks, and when I started, we wore gray uniforms, so the green and gray as your service providers.
We haven't got that much official business, so, so we're going to move it along now. Okay, item 6A has been deferred.
Mayor, need a motion.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the deferment of item 6A?
No, move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good? We good, Mauricio?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Okay, we have no ordinances for first reading, we have an ordinance for second reading. Item 9A, a budget amendment.
An ordinance of the City Commissioner of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, mandating ordinance number 2018-526, approving budget amendment number BA 1819-01 to the city's operating capital improvement budget for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. General funds, street maintenance and construction fund, building fund, public art trust fund, capital project fund, stormwater fund, and stormwater capital fund, authorizing the City Manager to do all things necessary to implement the terms and conditions of this ordinance, providing for an effective date, and this is second and final reading.
Ms. Tiffany?
So, as mentioned at the last commission meeting, this budget amendment is to record some necessary budget transactions, the now-audited fund balance carryovers from the prior fiscal year, purchase order carryovers from prior fiscal year, transfer of the police PBA step plan raises from the human resources budget to the police department budget, an additional appropriation of 1.4 million for the utility undergrounding, and then individual capital project carryovers from 9/30/18 to 10/11/18.
Okay, second reading, any questions?
No.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mauricio?
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sfetchen?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Excellent. Thank you, Tiffany. Thank you. Okay, item 10A, we've got a DOJ forfeiture funds expenditure?
A resolution authorizing the chief of police in accordance with the Comprehensive Crime Control Act of 1984 to expand partial forfeiture funds from the Department of Justice for the installation of 10 license plate reader system cameras, two boat engines for the marine patrol, and law enforcement award materials.
Okay, Chief.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioner, this request, again, is to utilize partial DOJ forfeiture funds to modernize our automated license plate readers, which need to be done. We also need to replace the two engines on our police vessel, and also to purchase law enforcement ribbons for the officers to wear on their uniforms, in an amount not to exceed 261,658,50.
Can we take A and B together? Sure, okay, let's vote on A. Okay, any questions for the Chief?
I have a question.
Sure.
Chief, for those that are watching, can you just clarify what the license plate readers do?
The license plate readers are an automated camera system that actually read the automotive tags that come through the city, and it's a tremendous tags that come through the city, and it's a tremendous crime-fighting tool for us. It does an amazing job. And again, the new system that we're using has got state-of-the-art technology, there's no more point-to-point, it's all cellular, it's going to be an amazing asset for us.
Great. Yeah, and it's been, I mean, we've gotten a lot of bad guys with that, so.
Yes, we have.
We've kept a lot of bad guys out of the city as well. Any other questions? Okay, do I hear a motion?
No.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 10B.
A resolution approving an agreement with Millennium Products, Inc. for the purchase and installation of license plate recognition systems.
So we just approve the money, now we've got to install them?
Exactly. It's just Millennium is the company that's going to, it's going to take care of it for us, and again, in an amount not to exceed $223,283.50.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
No, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Thank you, Luke. Appreciate it. Thank you. Item 10C.
A resolution approving amendments to the City of Sunny Isles Beach Drug-Free Workplace Program Policy.
Honorable Mayor, information?
Yeah.
Good evening. These proposed amendments to our city's drug and alcohol policy will bring us in compliance with the Federal Transit Administration regulations, and as a subrecipient of the ORA grant funds, the city is required to have this drug-free workplace policy with the specific elements covered in the FTA regulations. Therefore, we're bringing these revisions to you for approval tonight.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
So I have a drug-free workplace at One Blood, and now they keep asking me, as marijuana gets closer and closer to legalization, I'm trying to tell them, I don't want them drawing blood and smoking marijuana at the same time, you know, so it's, so that's been, that's been an ongoing debate, you know, at work. Any, so any questions?
No.
No? Do I hear a motion?
No, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10D.
A resolution ratifying a first amendment to the agreement with Georgia Enterprises, Inc. for a new HVAC chiller systems for the government center.
Susan?
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, we have a new AC system here that we finally closed out the project this past January. It's obviously working because it's cold in here tonight. And we entered into an amendment with them to have service on that system back in September of 2017, but we didn't ratify it until now because we didn't need it until now. So it's a one-year amendment to their original agreement.
Understood.
For maintenance.
Any questions? I think we all want to keep it cool in here. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Thank you.
With nothing else to come before the commission, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.